எங்கள் முனையாற்றே ஐயா வாழ்கே வாழ்கே உன்னாம் வாழ்கே ஐயா வாழ்கே வாழ்கே உன்னாம் வாழ்கே கேடுகிறேன் அனைவருமே அகன் களிகூரட்டு கேடுகிறேன் அனைவருமே இன்று பாடுகிறேன் யாபருமே இன்று பாடுகிறேன் நாபில்லாருமே ஐயா வாழ்கே வாழ்கே உன்னாம் வாழ்கே ஐயா வாழ்கே வாழ்கே உன்னாம் வாழ்கே புரைகளே நீ கோடிஸ்கோ திரமே குறைத்தீர்கும் வல்லவரே கோடிஸ்கோ திரமே ஆவக்கறக்கோகும் கத்தாவே ஆவக்கறக்கோகும் கத்தாவே ஐயா வாழ்கே வாழ்கே உன்னாம் வாழ்கே ஐயா வாழ்கே வாழ்கே உன்னாம் வாழ்கே தேவனுகே மகிமை தேவத்திற்கே மகிமை தேவனுகே மகிமை தேவத்திற்கே மகிமை என்னைதேடி வந்து பேட்டவரே தீனமுமகே மகிமை என்னைதேடி வந்து பேட்டவரே தீனமுமகே மகிமை
அல்லேலுயா praise the lord நம்மை யாலைத்துக்குள்ள வந்துருக்கோம் யாலைத்துக்குள்ள நம்ம வர்த்துக்கு காரணமே நான் தெரியுமா? அவர் நம்மைதேடி வந்து மிட்டார் யாலைத்துக்குள்ள வர்த்துக்கு நம்முக்கு தகிதி இருக்கலே? பாவிகளாய் திரோகிகளாயிருந்தோ amen? ஆனால் அவர் நம்மைதேடி வந்து oh glory to god நம்ம இருக்குற எடுத்துல ஒருமூடு பேசி மார்த்திகளித் தந்து wow come come அவருக்கு சொன்னது நான் அல்ல வந்திருந்து யாரு யாலைத்துல உக்கா கற்ற உயிர் நம்ம அண்டோருக்கு நன்றி சொன்னுருக்கோம் அது மாதிரில நன்றி சொன்னு மாதிரியும் தேவப்பிளைகளுக்கு மட்டும்தான் ஏச்சு மாதிரி யார் சொந்து கிட்ட அடியும் இருக்கோடு வாங்குறதுக்கு அவர்களுக்கு மட்டும்தான் ஏதாவது அது உம்மை amen? சாகப்போற சூழல யார்தாலும் அதை நடுவிலுக்குடு சோத்ரன் சொன்ன குடிய கொடு யார் இருக்குதா? நம்ம மட்டும்தான் amen? நம்ம மட்டும்தான் தெரியுமே நான் மட்டும்தான் நல்ல சத்தமா சொல்லுங்களே எந்த சூழலில் சோத்ரன் சொன்னது யாருக்கு மட்டும்தான் முடியும்? எனக்கு மட்டும்தான் முடியும் amen? அந்த சந்தோஷத்திலும் உக்காந்துருக்க இன்று காண்டு அவரோடு அழகுலாவலா சென்று போக நாலா எப்பின் கேட்டீங்கன்னா எங்க கண்ணில மூனாலும் நடக்குதோ இது யாரு தெரியும்போது நான் காவலப்படுகுதலே யாலைத்துக்கு வரும்போதுல கற்றர் ஆர்ப்பதும் செய்வார்னு நம்பிக்கொடுதான் வரே கற்றர் பேசுவார்னு நம்பிக்கொடுதான் வரே அவர் ஒர்நாள் நம்ம வெளியும் வெறுமையாக விடவே மாட்டார்னு நம்பிக்கொடுதான் யாலைத்துக்கு வரே வந்துட்டு போகும்போது அது உம்மையாகவே நான் அனுபவிக்கிறே கற்றர்னு நே கைவிடலே கற்றர்னு நே சந்தித்தார் கற்றர்னு நே ஒரு பேசினார் நான் திருப்பியாய் போகிறேன் உங்கள் நம்பிக்கை யாருக்கு தான் தெரிவார்ந்து கெட்டா? அவரோடு நெருங்கிருக்குற தேவப்போக்களுக்கு உங்கள் நம்பிக்கை அவர் தான் தெரிவார்ந்து go ahead
அன்பை என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே உம்மை நான் மறவே உமக்காய் வாழ்வே உம்மை நான் மறவே உமக்காய் வாழ்வே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே வாழ்வோ சாவோ இதுதான் பிரிக்க முடியும் வாழ்வோ சாவோ இதுதான் பிரிக்க முடியும் அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே தந்தைப்போன் அனைத்தே தாய்க்கோ தேற்றிஞ் தந்தைப்போன் அனைத்தே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே நான் செய்வே அதுதான் என் உணவு அதுதான் என் உணவு அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே உம்மை நான் மறவே உமக்காய் வாழ்வே உம்மை நான் மறவே உமக்காய் வாழ்வே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே உம்சித்தம் நான் செய்வே அதுதான் என் உணவு உம்சித்தம் நான் செய்வே அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே வாழ்வோ சாவோ அன்பே என் இயசுவே ஆருயிரே ஆட்கொண்ட என்தைவமே
hallelujah உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பேன் உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம் அன்பையே நம்பியிருப்பேன்
உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம் அன்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம் அன்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே நீதானே என் துணையானே என் கேடக மும்மானே நீதானே என் துணையானே என் கேடக மும்மானே என்னை நீலைப்பவரே ஆசே பதிப்பவரே என்னை நீலைப்பவரே என்னை ஆசே பதிப்பவரே உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே மூடிவு வரியந்தோ உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே மூடிவு வரியந்தோ உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்பும் மனிதுகள் யாவலையும் உன் திருவை சொன்னு சொன்னு உம்மை நம்பும் மனிதுகள் யாவலையும் உன் உம்மை நிகும் பிருது குற்றப்பட்டு போவதில்லை நான் வெற்கப்பட்டு போவதில்லை குற்றப்பட்டு போவதில்லை நான் வெற்கப்பட்டு போவதில்லை உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே மூடிவு வரியந்தோ உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே மூடிவு வரியந்தோ உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே சீரோன் பல்வர் உம்பதைக்கோ அசயாமன் நீலைத்தீரோபே சீரோன் பல்வர் திருபதைக்கோ அசயாமன் நீலைத்தீரோபே பாலாமியத்தின் கொண்டோ என்னே நீலைப்பதில்லை பாலாமியத்தின் கொண்டோ என்னே நீலைப்பதில்லை உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்புவே மூடிவு வரியந்தோ உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே மூடிவு வரியந்தோ உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் வெற்கியவான் உம்பையே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்மை நம்பியிருப்பே உம் அன்பை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்புவே நான் உம்மை நம்புவே உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்மையே நம்பியிருப்பே உம்மை நம்பும் நான் பாக்கியவான் உம்பையே நம்பியிருப்பே
praise the lord என்ன ஒரு அழகான பாட்டுல நான் உம்மையே நம்புவே amen? ஒரு சின்ன குஸ் பொன்னுவார் நான் சொல்லிருந்தேன் 100 I mean 1 ரூபேத்ரு உல்ஸு வாசிக்கணும் வாசித்தவர்களா yes என்போடாபோது எனக்கு தெரியும் நீங்க வாசித்திருக்குங்கன்று சொல்லி ரொம்ப சந்தோஷமார்ச்சு என்னும் கூட நிறைய பற்றல ஆனால் பந்தை எண்ணிக்கு 147 பேர் ரொம்ப சந்தோஷமார்க்கு எண்ணிக்கு போட்டுச்சிறிக்கு ஒப்போனா the first person was Mona Mona தொடைக்கு அவர் வாச்து பைபில்லர் underline பண்ணுதலாம் போட்டோ உட்டு தொடங்கி net அதுக்கப்புறம் தொடங்சியாவது இந்திக்கு வரைக்கும் வந்துட்டு தான் இருக்க 147 பேர் 1 ரூபேத்ரு உண்டு 5000 அதியார்த்தி வாசித்துக்கொக ஒரு காரண சொன்றேன் 5000 அதியார்த்தின் படின் நடந்த இந்த சபேரும் ஆஸ்திரிமாதமார்க amen? வித்தியாசமா இருக்கோம் praise the lord முதல் 5000 இன்னொரு மூடு அடுத்த அதியார்த்தின் நம்ம பேசுவே அப்பும் அது அப்போப்பன் நான் இனிமையை assignment கொடுத்துட்டே இருக்க அது ரொம்ப நல்லா இருக்க praise the lord assignment நல்லா இருக்குல்லா உடனே போது செய்யுதுக்கு நல்லா இருக்குது முடிச்சிட்டா அது பொருத்து ரொம்ப சொல்ல ஓகே? அதோ என்ன சொன்னதுக்கு தெரியுமா? ஓகே? praise the lord அது என்ன வாங்க என்ன காக்க வாங்குறது பெரிசா சொல்லு கிடைவா தெரிக்குதா இப்போ அப்படிக்கு நான் அழைவே பட்டு பார்க்க அது என்ன வாங்குறது எனக்கு சொல்ல போறு வார்க்க பாக்கியவான் அந்த பாட் ஆர்ந்துச்சோ நா அதுதான் ஆர்ந்துச்சோ சரி உம்மை நம்புகிற வருக பாக்கியவான்க அப்படியும் ஒரு வாசனை சொன்னு இருக்க கற்றர் மேல் நம்பிக்கே மீது கற்றரைத் தன் நம்பிக்காய் இப்படியும் ஒரு சொன்ன வேண்டிய அவசியம் இருக்கல எத்தனை பேர்க்கு தெரியும்? 100, 200 எத்தனை நீங்க சொன்னுக கிருஷ்டிக்கு பக்கத்துல யார் இருக்க எத்தனை அவசியமா இருக்க எங்கிருக்க நீ இனி பைபில்ல பாக்குக்கு கூடாது நான் கேட்டுடன் சொன்ன அது எங்கிருக்குன்னு சொல்லணும் அதுவும் நீங்கள் ஏரியம் யா 17 7 எட்டாவது okay? hallelujah எல்லார் கரங்களித் தட்டி கற்றரை மேல் கொள்ள சரி அப்படியும் கொஞ்சம் எழுப்பின்று நல்ல இந்த பாட்டை மார்த்தி சொன்னது மாதிரியும் அவரே நம்பிக்காய் வைத்து நம்பாடு ஓகே கொஞ்சம் தமிழுள்ள பாட்டு நான் வாங்குத்தான் பாடு கேட்டுருக்காங்க glory to god yes
உங்கள் இது பைவே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே என்னை வியாதிவை தீரே உங்கள் இது பைவே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே நான் இது பைவே இல்லாமே ஆகிடே யாரு இரே நான் இது பைவே இல்லாமே இது பைவே யாரு இரே நான் இது பைவே இல்லாமே கதறிய அருகே அதிலே கதறிய அருகே உங்கள் இது பைவே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் நானும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் நானும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நானும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே
நீ கரங்களை உயர்த்தி சொன்னோம் praise the lord
உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே
அது உத்தனை இந்த அடி நம்ம எல்லாருமே செய்து தனிமையில் அழுத போது தேட்டிட யாரு மேல எவ்வளவு நிறைய தனிமையை அழுதுறுகு தெரியுமா? வெளியே வந்து அப்படியும் மோதல் பாத்து பூன் சிறிப்பா இருப்போ ஆனால் தலிமையிலுக்காந்து போது அழுது கலையணையெல்லாம் அனச்சி தேட்டு யாரு மேற்போட்ட நான் தழ்ளாடின் நடந்த போது அழுத அழுது சோர்த்து போயி தலையெல்லாம் குண்டு போயி நடக்கத் தெரியாம நடக்க முடியாம நான் தழ்ள ஆடின் போது என்ன தானிட யாரு மேல யாரு மேல இது ரெண்டும் போய் அடுத்த ஸ்டெப் இன்னும் ஒருதன் பரத்தரா போய் கதறிய அழுத நேரத்தில அழுதுறுக்கீங்களா நான் அழுதுறுக்கே கதறிய அழுதுறுக்கு நீங்க அழுதுறுக்கீங்களா amen? யாருக்கு தெரியாம அழுத நேரக்கு உண்டு எல்லாரும் மூனாலும் அழுத நேரக்கு உண்டு கதறிய அழுத நேரத்தில என்ன கண்ணீரே பக்கத்துலக்கு யாரு மேற்றுடைக்கல amen? நான் நம்பிருந்தோ கூட யாரு தொடைக்கல கதறிய அழுத நேரத்தில என் கண்ணீரை தொடைத்த உங்கள் இது பைவே உங்கள் திருவே உங்கள் இது பைவே hallelujah அந்த இது இல்லே நான் நானும் hallelujah yes இந்த அடி படிச்சர்த்த அடி
தனிமையில் அழுத போது இது பைவே யாரு இல்லே நான் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் இது பைவே இல்லே கதறிய அருகே நேரத்தில என்னை புறைத்து திருபே இது பைவே இல்லே நான் நானும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் நானும் இல்லே இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே நான் இது பைவே இல்லே இது பைவே இல்லே நான் இது பைவே இல்லே என்னை நின்னு நின்னு முடியும் நான் இது பைவே என்னை நின்னு நின்னு முடியும் என்னை நின்னு நின்னு முடியும் என்னை நின்னு நின்னு முடியும் உயத்தினது உங்கள் இது பைவே உயத்தினது உங்கள் இது பைவே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் நானும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் நானும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நானும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நானும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவோதே
ரெண்டு கரங்களை உயர்த்தி ஆவுங்க சொன்னோம்
இது இல்லாமே நான் ஒன்றும் இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே உங்கள் இது பைவே உங்கள் இது பைவே இல்லே நான் இது பைவே இயசுவே எங்கள் மதிந் உலாவின் மோழன் வாசம் செய்வு எங்கள் மதிந் உலாவின் மோழன் வாசம் செய்வு எங்கள் மதில் உலாவின். எங்கள் லோலன் வாசம் செய்வு. அல்லெல்லூயா? நீங்க நம்முடிமதில் உலாவீட்டுறுக்குது யாரு? யஸ் அப்பா. ஆமென்? அவர் உலாவீட்டுறுதல். உன்னோரும் உட்சேவிகள் ஒத்துக் கண்டிப்பாய் காண்பாரு. உன்னுடையிருதைத் தேக்கண்பாரு. உன்னுடைய நினைவைக் காண்பாரு. உன்னு சிந்தனைகளைக் காண்பாரு. கண்டிட்ட அப்படிப் போய்டமாட்டாரு. உன்னுடைய தேவிகளின் சந்தித்தவராய் கடந்சுதுவா. அல்லெல்லூயா? இந்த நாள். உன்னுடைய தேவிகளின் சந்திக்கும் நாளாயிருக்கட்டும். இது நாள் உங்களை உயிர்ப்பிக்கிற நாளாயிருக்குது. இது நாள் உங்களை தலப்படுத்துகிற நாளாயிருக்கட்டும். இது நாள் உங்களை கிருபைக்குளாயின் நடத்துகிற நாளாயிருக்கட்டும். அல்லெல்லூயா, நல்லா. எல்லாரும் சேர்ந்து பாடும் தொடர்ந்து, தொடர்ந்து கத்ரியாரா? லைக் நேவர் பிபோ. நீங்க நான் ஆராதிப்புறுக்குது எப்படியா ஆராதிப்புறுக்கப்போறீங்க இன்கெட்டா? இதுவரைக்கு இல்லாத அளவுக்கு நான் ஆராதிப்புறுக்கப்போறேன். ஆமென்? ஏன் கெட்டா? அது குண்ணால் உரியிடையே, நான் பிரஸ் டைம் எல்லாம் அடக்குறதுக்கு விரும்பலை. பட் ஐ வான்ட் யூ டு லுக் அட் தத் பிரிவிஸ் போர்ப்பு. தஸ்ஸன் கம்ஸ் அப். இத்ஸ நியூ டே டாண்டிங். இத்ஸ டைம் டு சிங் யூ வர்ஷிப். வாட்டேவர் மைபாஸ். அண்ட் வாட்டேவர் லைஸ் பிபோர்மீ. என்ன நடந்தாலும், ஏது வந்தாலும். லெட் மீ பி சிங்கிங் வென் தி இவ்நிங் கம்ஸ். ஆமென்? யஸ். பிரைஸ் லார்ட். கொரிது கார், கொரிது கார், கொரிது கார். அல்லெல்லூயா? உம்மையாகும் என்முடிமனச்சல் அப்படியிருக்கா? ஆமென்? நம்ம பாட்டு பாட்டு இருதை பாயில வர்ற மாட்ட மாத்திரமல்ல. இருதைத்தனா அழுதுல. நாட்டிக்கடி உங்களுக்கு சொல்லிருக்கே. நமக்குப் பாடத் தெரியாது, இருதத் தெரியாத வார்த்திகளெல்லாம் நமக்காக. எனக்காக. ஏதோ ஒரு தேவ மன்ஷன் எடிவிச்சிருக்குதான். ஆமென்? சோ அதை பாடும்போது நாம் அதாக மாறிட்டான் நமக்கு நல்லது. அல்லெல்லூயா? அல்லெல்லூயா? நோ ஒரு பார்ந்து, யஸ் என்னைக் கைவிடமாட்டார். எல்லாரும் சேர்ந்து. யேவு என்னைக் கைவிடமாத்தா. கைவிடமாட்டார்னு பாடிருக்கோ. இப்பே அப்படி பாடப்போறோ? நீங்க கண்டிப்பா சொல்லலாம், கைவிடமல்ல. 110 வர்ஷத்துக்கு காப்பறம். ஆமென்? யாருக்கும் விஷயம் தெரியாது. உங்களுக்கு கரக்குது தெரியா, அவருக்குது தெரியோ. 110 வர்ஷத்துக்கு பருக்கற்றர்களுங்களே? கைவிடலே. உங்களுக்கு கைவிட்டாரா மா, அன்னால மா? எம்மா? பிரதர் உங்களுக்கு கைவிட்டாரா? இல்லை. அப்போ கைவிடமாட்டார்னு பாட்னா பத்தாது, பிறகு எப்படி பாடணும்? கைவிடபில்லையும் பாடும், பிரைஸ் லார்ட். ரெடியா? யஸ். ஆமென்? அல்லெல்லூயா? உங்க வாழ்க்கையில் கடுப்புபோயில் வந்தது. பெருங்காற்று. வீசிட்டு அவருங்களே? கைவிட்டாரா? லெஸிமா விட்டாரா? இல்லை, பிரைஸ் லார்ட். அந்தப் பக்க, எல்லாரும் ஒருதன் பக்கத்துல உருக்குற பார்ச்சுங்களே? யஸ் என்ன கைவிடலியே? அது பத்தாது, என்னே கைவிடலியே? உன்ன கைவிடவாரா? அல்லெல்லூயா? என்னைக் கைவிடல, இருக்கு இருக்கு. என்னைக் கைவிடலென்று தொட்டு நல்லா இருக்கது. அதோடு அந்த ஏ சேத்துட்டா இன்னும் தொட்டு நல்லா. இல்லை? என்னைக் கைவிடலென்று தொட்டு சந்தோஷம் தான். அதுக்கு பிறகு என்ன சொல்கிறோ? என்னே கைவிடலியே? எப்படி சொல்லுங்கள் பார்க்கலா? என்னே கைவிடலியே? உன்ன கைவிடவாரா? அல்லெல்லூயா? நோ ஒரு பொறிமா. மட்டே. விடமாட்டே. என் யேசுவை விடமாட்டே. மட்டே. விடமாட்டே. யேசுவை விடமாட்டே. மட்டே, 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 விடவில்லாதே. என் யேசுவை விடமாட்டே. மட்டே, 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 விடவில்லாதே. என் யேசுவை விடமாட்டே. கபி. நாகபி. பிராபுகோசோரோ மா. கபி. நாகபி. பிராபுகோசோரோ மா. கபி, 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 கபி பினாயி. பிராபுகோசோரோ மா. கபி, கபி, கபி. கொரிது கார. அல்லெல்லூயா? 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 யஸ் என்ன கைவிடமாட்டார்னு கேட்டோ, யஸ் என்னைக் கைவிடலென்று சொன்னோ? நம்ம ஒரு காரிய சொல்கிறோ. மாட்டேன். விடமாட்டேன். யேசுவை விடமாட்டேன். ஆமென்? எல்லாம் கொஞ்சம் நேரம் கரங்களை ஒரு ஸ்தோத்ரம்பணி. நல்ல ஸ்தோத்ரம்பணோ. நல்ல ஆபில் நிறஞ்சு ஸ்தோத்ரம்பணி. கத்தாவியின் தராத்ரி வெளியிலே. நாங்கள் தேவ பிரச்சனத்தில் வந்துருக்கோ. தேரென்னோடு பேசணும். எங்களோடு பேசணும். உங்க வார்த்திகளை எனக்காதுக்கு நேரம் வரணும். என்னுடைய இருதைத்திக்கு நேரம் வரணும். அவைகளை உயிர்ப்பிக்கணும். ஓ கொரிது கார, அல்லெல்லூயா? எல்லா ஸ்தோத்ரம்பணி, ஸ்தோத்ரம்பணி கொஞ்சம் நேரம் போன பரவும். ஆண்டாவரு துதிக்கிறது துதி. உங்களுக்கு நல்லது, இட்ஸ் ஆல்வேஸ் குட். பிரைஸ் லார்ட், பிரைஸ் லார்ட், பிரைஸ் லார்ட், பிரைஸ் லார்ட், பிரைஸ் லார்ட். ஓ ஹல்லெல்லூயா? ஹல்லெல்லூயா, ஹல்லெல்லூயா? நாங்கள் துதிக்கும்போது செல்லர்க்கு விடுதலை உண்டாப்பதாக. துதிக்கும்போது செல்லர்க்கு விடுதலை உண்டாப்பதாக. எந்தன்னு நோக்குதோடு வந்துருக்கிறார்களோ? நாங்கள் துதிக்கும்போது அவ்வளை பாடுகள், அவ்வளை கிற்தாவிக்கு சொன்னுகள் நீங்குவதாக. பிரைஸ் லார்ட், பிரைஸ் லார்ட், பிரைஸ் லார்ட், பிரைஸ் லார்ட். அல்லெல்லூயா? அல்லெல்லூயா? இட்ஸ் குட் டு வர்ஷிப் தலார்ட். ஆண்டாவரை ஆராதிப்புது நல்லது. ஆமென்? அது நம்ம என் மறக்கச் செய்து. வென் வீ வர்ஷிப். பர்க்டெட்டிங் ஆர்வர்செல்ஸ். ஹீ டேக்ஸ் ஓவா. அவர் நம்மை அப்படி நம்முடைய காரித்த பொற்படுத்துகிற. நம்ம துதிக்கும்போது அவரு செய்றாரு? என்ன செய்றாரு? நம்மை? நான் கொஞ்சம் சத்தமாதா சொல்லுங்களே? பொற்படுத்துகிறது குழுக்கார. நம்ம நம்மளத் பொற்படுத்துகிறது காட்டலோ. அவர் நம்மள பொற்படுத்திட்டார்னா தொட்டு ஜாலியா இருக்கு. பிரைஸ் லார்ட். அல்லெல்லூயா? யூ மே வி சீட்டு. அல்லெல்லூயா? பிரைஸ் கார், பிரைஸ் கார், பிரைஸ் கார். ஐ எம் சோ வெரி ஹேப்பி அண்ட் ஡ிலைட்டேட் டு பி இன் தி ஹாஸ் ஆப் கார்ட். தி இவ்நிங். பிக்காஸ் டி ஸி த் ப்ளேஸ் ஆல்டோ வீ மீட் கார்ட் இன் பிரச்சன. டி ஸி த் ப்ளேஸ் வீ மீட் ஆல் கம் டுகேதர் அண்ட் மீட் கார்ட் அண்ட் கார்ட் மீட் இஸ் பிப்போ. பர் செவர்ல் இயர்ஸ் வீ ஹேவ் நாட் ஏனி ஹேட் ஐனி ஸ்பெஷல் மீட்டிங் ஸஸ் ஸச்ச. ஐ ரிமம்பர் த் டைம்ஸ் வென் வீ ஆல் கேம் டுகேதர் ஆல் ஆப் அவர். பிரஞ்சுர்ச்சஸ் அண்ட் த் பிலிவர்ஸ் கம் டுகேதர் இட் இயர் பர் அகன்வென்சன். அண்ட் இட்ஸ் அ செலிப்ரேஷன். பட் வீ ஆல்வேஸ் ஹேட் இட் ஆவ்ட்ஸாய் தி செர்ச்ச. பட் டை ஐ எம் சோ ஡ிலைட்டோல். தி இவ்நிங் தத் வீ ஆல் கேம் டுகேதர் இன் தி செர்ச்ச. ஐ நோ மெனி பிப்போல் ஆர்ச்டில் வர்க்கிங் அண்ட் நாட் ஏப்ளு டு கம் அத் தி ஸ்டைன். பட் ஐ வெரி ஹேப்பி பர் தோஸ் வீ ஆர் இயர். அண்ட் ஆல்சோ ஆவர். ஸ்வர்ஸ் இஸ் ஆன்லைன். சோ ஐ கிரீட் ஆல் ஆப் யூ வீ ஆர் வாச்சிங் ஆன்லைன். ஐ டெபின்டில்லி பிலீவ் தத் கார்ட் இஸ் கோயிட்டு டு ஸம்திங் ஹீர் அண்ட் ஸம்திங் தேர் இன் வேரவர் யூ ஆர். ஆமென்? எஸ்டுடே வீ ஹேட் ஆவர். பிரஞ்சுர்ச்ச் பாஸ்ட்டர்ஸ் கான்பிரென்ச் இயர் மீட்டிங். ஆல் ஆப் தேம் ஹேட் கம் வித் த் பேம்லிஸ். பர் மோர்னிங் டு இவ்நிங் வீ ஹேட் வெரி ஜாய்போல் டைம். நாட் ஜஸ் பிக்காஸ் தேயல் கேம் டுகேதர் அண்ட் வீ வெரி ஏப்ளு டு சீ இட்சோதர் ஆப் செவர்ல் இயர்ஸ். தத்ஸ் தத்ஸ் நாட். தத்ஸ் நாட் ஆல். பர் தி மோர்னிங். அண்ட் பர் தி டைம் தி வோர்ட் ஆப் கார்ட் கேம். வென் தி மேன் ஆப் கார்ட் கேம். வென் யூ கேம். தி இன்டீர் ஆட்மாஸ்பியர் செய்ந்த. பர் தி டைம் யூ ஓப்பன் தி ஸ்கிரிப்ச்சர் அண்ட் பிக்கண்டு ஸ்பீக். ஐ குட் பீல் த் பிரச்சன ஆப் பிரவிவே. செவர்ல் ஆப் அவர் பிரஞ்சுர்ச்ச் பாஸ்ட்டர்ஸ் ஹேவ் வெரி டைர்ட். நீடி. நீடி. வெரி வீக் இன் த் போட்டிஸ். பிக்காஸ் அத் பாண்டெமிக். டூ டூ ரொட்டா இயர்ஸ். பட் வென் தேல்ட். மெனி ஆப் தேம் கேம் அண்ட் தோர் மீ. ஐயா, டி ஸி த் பெஸ்ட் ஸ்வர்ஸ் ஐவ் ஹேட் இன் மா லைப். I never had them in a group so far. But at the same time, day before yesterday, I made a group of our pastors. They left. I sent them a picture of all the group of, of all the pastors and their wives. And then I also said, thank you so much. And when I, when I sent that. You can see everyone had told me, pastor, we have never had such an experience in our lives until today. There were clear prophecies. Powerful prayers. And the people went home joyfully. I could have told you who comes, who is going to be here for the service. Because I knew it, I knew it two, two weeks ago. I knew it two weeks before. But I did not give you the name. Do you know why? I wanted the Lord to be with him and I wanted him to be revealed as the voice of God and I wanted him to be seen as the face of God. About nineteen or twenty years ago, this man of God had come out to our church. And now he has come here again. Some of you may remember, some of you may not. But the, when they came, the Lord touched everyone of you through his ministry. Now he has a ministry around the world in about sixty-seven countries. He has got a teaching ministry. Counseling ministry. Prophetic ministry. Anointing ministry. So many things in one little body. And I believe that God is going to touch with this evening. And I want you to be expecting something. Expecting something. If you do not expect anything. You will not get anything. The lame man at the gate, beautiful gate. He looked at Peter and John expecting that he would get something. Something I will get. But, but you know what he got? You know what he got? He did not get silver and gold. But he got. Oh hallelujah. He jumped up. Stood, walked and went into the synagogue and glorified God. I believe this evening, some of you are going to just. Oh hallelujah. And for that purpose. So delightfully, humbly, I asked the man of God, Reverend Harabin Disilva, to come and bring God's word and pastor my dear. Praise the Lord. How many are glad to be in the house of God this evening? Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. I am excited to be here. God is the greatest arranger I have ever found. But he is an arranger. Praise God, I repeat this again. God is the greatest arranger I have ever found. Praise the Lord. Quickly, we are going to go to the word of God. I am so glad to be here with Pastor Pratap Singh and Sister Sibha in the things of God. And to be with all of you. This is God's appointed time. Can you tell yourself, this is God's appointed time in my life? I want you to say this, you know why? Let the devil hear what you are saying. This is God's appointed time in my life. Say it again. This is God's appointed time in my life. Say it again. This is God's appointed time in my life. The devil doesn't want you to say this word. Because he doesn't want to hear this word. So he can keep you confused and depressed and, and suffocated for the rest of your life. How many have been waiting for the best day in your life to come? Praise God, hallelujah. Praise God. You know why God gave us hands? So I am going to ask you to do something. I know you said, this is God's appointed time in my life. Now you're, you're going to lift your hand and say, this is God's appointed time in my life. Glory, hallelujah. Say it again. This is God's appointed time in my life. Glory, hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Open your Bible. The book of Genesis. The twenty, the first chapter. And verse twenty-six. And twenty-seven and onwards. And God said, let us make man in our own image after our likeness and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the fowl of the air and over the cattle and over all the earth and over every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth. So God created man in his own image. In the image of God created him, male and female created he them. And look at verse twenty-eight. And God blessed them and said unto them. Be fruitful. And multiply. And replenish. The earth and subdue it. And God, verse twenty, and God said, behold, I have given you every herb bearing seed which is upon the face of all the earth and every tree in which the fruit of a tree yielding seed to you it shall be for meat. Verse thirty, and to every beast of the earth and to every fowl of the air and to everything that creepeth upon the earth wherein there is life, I have given every green herb for meat and it was so. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. May the Lord bless us for this word. There are two books the world fights in the, against, in the Bible. There are two books in the Bible, the whole world is fighting. Praise God. The two books the world is very upset is the book of Genesis and the book of Revelation. You know why? In Genesis, God shows that he is in authority. In the book of Revelation, God shows himself as a God who will hold everyone accountable. Whether it is the political world, the social world, either religious world, God will hold all the three groups accountable. So the political world will have to give an account to God. The social world will have to give an account to God. And the religious world will have to give an account to God. And man hates two things. Man hates two things. He doesn't like a boss, he doesn't like anyone to be in authority and he doesn't want to give an account to anybody. Let me break it down. Ask your children. No, let us, how many of us were once upon a time ten years old? One, two, only two people. No, no. How many of us remember we were once ten years old? Okay, watch this. How many of us remember our parents told us? You don't do this and you can do this. How many of you did not like to do, do not like your mom to be, and dad to be the boss over you? I am the first one to say yes. Maybe you didn't understand. How many of you did not tell, do not like your mom and dad to boss over you? Okay, now you understood. How many of us remember when we became fourteen and fifteen years old? Then we get pocket money or they gave us money to go and buy some things. Or they may give us go and buy something and come. Suppose they give you twenty rupees. And they told you to buy certain things. They'd say, where is the remaining change? How many children did not like to give the account to the parents? I am one of them. Maybe you didn't understand that. How many wives get money from their husbands to buy groceries? Then they give you thousand rupees. When they come back home, the husband comes back home. He is going to ask you, how did you spend the money, how much money you got left over? How many wives don't like to give an account to the husband? Don't be afraid, nobody is going to hurt you. We don't like to. Let me break it down still further. Your husband goes to work at seven o'clock in the morning and comes back at five o'clock in the morning. Then he comes back, it's a coming back at six o'clock home, he comes nine o'clock home. Then what the wife does? Where were you at six o'clock? Where were you at seven o'clock? Where were you at eight o'clock? Where were you at nine o'clock? They ask an account. Now don't be afraid of your wives, they are not going to hurt you. Only husbands don't like to give an account. We don't like to. Only three honest men. How many know people get angry when you ask them your account? Thank you. How many husbands don't like their wives to boss over them? They boss over them, they get angry. How many of us get angry when they try to be boss over us? We get angry, right? The same thing is the book of Genesis and Revelation. In Genesis, God shows he is in authority, he is the owner of everything. They don't like that. In Revelation, everyone must give an account. In Revelation, everyone must give an account.
In Revelation, everyone must give an account.
Praise the Lord, hallelujah. Saying that,
Saying that,
I am looking tonight, God decides to create man.
The question is, did God think of creating man after he created everything else?
Or was God's plan of creating man was already in his mind before he created other things?
The question is, did God think of creating man after he created everything else? Or was God's plan of creating man was already in his mind before he created other things?
God intention to create man was number one on his mind.
The question is, did God think of creating man after he created everything else?
Praise the Lord. When you read the history of creation,
When you read the history of creation,
Job gives us, the book of Job gives us a certain part of a creation.
The book of Job gives us a certain part of a creation.
And when you look at the book of Job, there is certain references. There was, before he created man and the new world, there was already a pre-Adamic creation.
The book of Job gives you a reference. Before the creation of the human being, there were already the elements of Adam.
Praise God, before Adam was born.
Praise God, before Adam was born.
Scientists have recorded the dinosaurs and all were there at some point in our earth.
Scientists have recorded the dinosaurs and all were there at some point in our earth.
And when they did the carbon testing of the dinosaur skeletons, they found out they were before Adam was made.
And when they did the carbon testing of the dinosaur skeletons, they found out they were before Adam was made. And when they did the carbon testing of the dinosaur skeletons, they found out they were before Adam was made.
So they were the giant beasts in the land.
So they were the giant beasts in the land.
Now we find dinosaurs found their fossils, their skeletons are found in different parts of the world from time to time.
Now we find dinosaurs found their fossils, their skeletons are found in different parts of the world from time to time.
When you look at, this is not the time, I may teach some other time, in the pre-Adamic time, there were some giant beasts.
When you look at, this is not the time, I may teach some other time, in the pre-Adamic time, there were some giant beasts. When you look at, this is not the time, I may teach some other time, in the pre-Adamic time, there were some giant beasts.
So the angels were in charge of the world.
So the angels were in charge of the world.
And those angels turned into bad angels, and God destroyed the world. And the scientists have recorded, there was one historic flood before Adam's time.
And the scientists have recorded, there was one historic flood before Adam's time.
And that's how it is.
And that's how it is.
Praise God, I'll show you something tonight.
Praise God, I'll show you something tonight.
Look at the first verse.
Look at the first verse.
In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth.
In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth.
Look at the second verse.
Look at the second verse.
And the earth was without form.
And the earth was without form.
That means the earth was already there.
That means the earth was already there.
But it had no form.
But it had no form.
What kind of form had the earth?
What kind of form had the earth?
Look at that verse, and the darkness was upon the face of the deep, and the spirit of God moved upon the face of these waters.
And the spirit of God moved upon the face of these waters.
So the earth was there and the water was there even before Adam was made.
So the earth was there and the water was there even before Adam was made.
So the water was the shape of the earth.
So the water was the shape of the earth.
It was like a swamp, mud and water mixed together, just like muddy water.
It was like a swamp, mud and water mixed together, just like muddy water.
Keep that picture in your mind.
Keep that picture in your mind.
The heavens were there, the earth was there, and the waters were there.
The heavens were there, the earth was there, and the waters were there.
And then darkness was there.
And then darkness was there.
There was, that was there before God said, let there be light.
There was, that was there before God said, let there be light.
I hope you got that picture in your mind.
I hope you got that picture in your mind.
Now God decides,
Now God decides,
the angels failed to rule the world and did a bad job. I am going to create man in my own image and hand over the world to them.
I am going to create man in my own image and hand over the world to them.
So what I was trying to bring that, God was, had already planned to bring man into the world.
So what I was trying to bring that, God was, had already planned to bring man into the world.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
How many of you understood thus far?
How many of you understood thus far?
I am going to go slow today.
I am going to go slow today.
So that you'll understand what I am saying.
So that you'll understand what I am saying.
Now God had the plan to make man.
Now God had the plan to make man.
Now look at God's way of arranging things.
Now look at God's way of arranging things.
So God's plan is to make man.
So God's plan is to make man.
But when you look at God's arrangement of creation, he creates man last.
But when you look at God's arrangement of creation, he creates man last.
Why did God create man last when that was the plan God had to make man?
Why did God make all the other vegetations, the animals, the birds and fishes, and the light, the sun, the moon, and these things first? And the light, the sun, the moon, and these things first?
Then there was a question, why did not God make the plants first and then create the sun?
Then there was a question, why did not God make the plants first and then create the sun? Then there was a question, why did not God make the plants first and then create the sun?
Why did he make the vegetation first and make the sun later?
Why did he make the vegetation first?
Why did he make the vegetation first?
Why did he make the vegetation first?
Many people have asked me that question.
Many people have asked me that question.
Praise God, so they asked me, why did God not create man first?
Why did God not create man first?
Why did not God make the vegetation first?
Why did not God make the vegetation first?
Why did not God make the animals first?
Why did not God make the animals first?
How many know we ask all those kind of questions?
How many know we ask all those kind of questions? I am asking my children.
Let me break it down.
Let me break it down.
The husband knows the wife is a good cook.
The husband knows the wife is a good cook.
Then the wife has got, she cuts onions, green chili, the curry leaves, all the masala powders. She arranges everything in a line.
Then the wife has got, she cuts onions, green chili, the curry leaves, all the masala powders. She arranges everything in a line.
Then the husband does not know how to cook.
Then the husband does not know how to cook.
You know what he does?
You know what he does?
Why you are putting salt first, why you are putting chili powder last? He asks all those kind of questions.
He asks all those kind of questions.
What is wrong if you put the onions first and put the chili last? He asks all kind of questions.
What is wrong if you put the onions first and put the chili last?
The one who is ignorant asks unnecessary questions.
The one who is ignorant asks unnecessary questions.
There are two types of questions.
There are two types of questions.
One are intelligent questions.
One are intelligent questions.
The second are ignorant questions.
The second are ignorant questions.
What do you mean by ignorant questions?
What do you mean by ignorant questions?
A person who does not gather the knowledge of a subject and asks a question before he has the knowledge of the subject, those questions are ignorant questions.
Those questions are ignorant questions.
There are some who will know, have the knowledge of the subject,
There are some who will know, have the knowledge of the subject,
Then they ask questions.
Then they ask questions.
Those are intelligent questions.
Those are intelligent questions.
So husband who is ignorant of cooking, he will ask ignorant questions, why you put this first, why you put that last, why you do this way, why you do that way?
So husband who is ignorant of cooking,
He wants their food to be tasty.
He wants their food to be tasty.
But he says, why don't you just boil the meat first? And after the boil, then put all the masala salt and then cook it?
Why don't you just boil the meat first?
He'll ask such questions.
Because he does not know cooking.
Because he does not know cooking. Praise the Lord, hallelujah. And to make food tasty, only the cook knows how to arrange, at what time each thing should be put.
You know when the good cooks, the wife who cooks good, do you know when her cooking goes bad? You know when the good cooks, the wife who cooks good, do you know when her cooking goes bad? When the hungry husband comes to the kitchen and says, where is the food? When the hungry husband comes to the kitchen and says, where is the food?
So she is in the hurry, how to cook fast?
So she is in the hurry, how to cook fast?
And he raises his, and he raises his voice and he gets upset.
And he raises his, and he gets upset.
So in her fear of her husband's voice, she puts everything, she does not watch what she is putting, when she is putting. In the end, it is not a good cooking at all.
So in the end, it is not a good cooking at all.
So I tell husbands,
So I tell husbands,
when you are hungry, don't go to the kitchen while your wife is cooking.
Because if you go to the kitchen when you are hungry, you are going to slow her down and the food is not going to taste good.
Because she has got a plan, she is arranging everything to make your food tasty.
Now I will answer the question.
Now I will answer the question. Why did God make man last?
Why did God make man last?
Some sociologists in a meeting asked me, why did God create man last?
Some sociologists in a meeting asked me, why did God create man last?
Why did God not create man first that he could see how God was doing everything?
Why did God not create man first that he could see how God was doing everything?
You know why?
Why do you know?
Why God created man last?
Why did God created man last?
You know it took six days, five days to make all the vegetations, the herbs, the fish, and the celestial bodies to create.
It took five days.
And if God had created man first,
And if God had created man first,
man gets hungry in four hours.
He has to wait five days before the tomatoes, before the oranges, before the vegetables come into existence.
Can you believe he can't wait hungry for twenty minutes? Can he wait for five hours?
Praise the Lord.
How many know God is right to create man last?
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. But we ask God, Lord, why didn't you do this first? Why didn't you do this first? Why didn't you do this first? We have questions.
Remember, God has a plan in every person's life.
But to bring that plan into existence, there are steps, there are arrangements, and timing between the arrangements and the steps. Praise the Lord. God will never be late.
But he has planned in your life, will come on time.
What we say is a delay is God is putting things in order. God is arranging things. God is putting things step by step. Why did God not create the vegetation first, the trees, the fruit trees first?
There is a reason.
Because these plants need sunlight to make their food.
Praise the Lord.
The plants can, the leaves, the plants can make their food only if there is sun, if the sun is up there.
And we call that photosynthesis.
Praise God, hallelujah. How many know God is right to make the sun first and the vegetation second?
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. In the human eye, we think God is not a good planner.
But when you learn from creation,
God has a systematic method. He has to make arrangements. And praise God. And so when, when God has a plan in your life,
And when we say, Lord, why have you delayed?
No, our delay is God arranging things in the background.
Praise the Lord.
There is no delay in God's methods of bringing your future into existence.
Praise the Lord.
Praise God. There's another question.
Praise God.
Saul, King Saul failed. The general of the Philistine army, Goliath, has invaded the land.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God knew what was happening.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
I want you to pay close attention for the next few minutes.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the Bible says Goliath was yelling and screaming and threatening Israel every day for forty days.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
we may ask a question.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
why don't God destroy Goliath on the first day he invaded?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
we may ask that question.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
why it took, why it took forty, after forty days, the solution came?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
who was God's solution to defeat Goliath?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise God. What was God's solution to defeat Goliath?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
is David.
If you don't know anything about the subject, hallelujah.
Why did not God bring David on the first day Goliath was roaring and invaded the land?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
I will say it again.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God saw Goliath has invaded the land.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
why David comes forty days later?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God's solution to defeat Goliath comes forty days later.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
why God took, we say, Lord, why you took so long time to send us a solution?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
you, you saw how we are suffering.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
you saw how much fear has come into us.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
forty days of anxiety.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
forty days of depression.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
forty days feeling defeated.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
Lord, did not you see my suffering?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
why did not you come on the first day of my suffering? On the first day of the enemy's attack on me and bring me a solution?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise God, that's what we would do.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
but David was not yet ready to face Goliath.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he has no experience.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
so God is now arranging David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God is preparing David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
so what God did?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he sent a lion.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
sent a lion to David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
how many know God orders our steps?
If you don't know anything about the subject, hallelujah.
Nothing happens to our lives. No Satan come into your life until God permits it.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
So God arranges a lion to come to David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
so the lion got a lamb.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the lamb is crying out.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
David heard that sound.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he ran to that sound.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he did not hear the lion's sound.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
because the lion is very intelligent.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
if he made a sound, the shepherd would come.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the lion came quietly, like the devil comes quietly and doesn't make any sound.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the lion was the thief like Satan is the thief.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
lion is the thief, so Satan is also a thief.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
so quietly the lion came.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he grabbed the lamb.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the lamb began to cry.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
David heard the lamb cry.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he ran towards that sound.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
and he sees it is a lion.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he has never met the lion before.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
now he is facing the lion.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God is watching David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God is preparing his solution for victory.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise God. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
So God is watching what David will do to the lion.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God is not giving him any advice.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God is not counseling him either.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
like we, we want advice and counseling all the time from pastor.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise God. Hallelujah. And each counseling session takes at least half an hour, minimum.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
is it not? Look at what happens.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God is watching David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
what is he going to do?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise the Lord. If you want to become a leader, God will allow certain things to come into your life and observe how you will handle it.
If you don't know anything about the subject, when those difficult things come. If you don't know anything about the subject,
what is God looking into David?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he is waiting for the greatest moment. Is David a swift decision maker?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
a great leader has the ability to swiftly make a good decision.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
we have many Christian workers who would like to do the ministry.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
there's a pastor. I will go there and start a church.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
they will tell the senior pastor.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
they will come and tell Pastor Pratap Singh.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
I'm going to do that. And so the young man goes to start a church.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
then he make a telephone call.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
pastor.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
they chased me away.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
they are fighting with me.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
they are throwing stones at me.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
what must I do pastor?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
you failed the first test to become a great leader.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
a great leader, praise God. Hallelujah. Doesn't ask counseling in the midst of danger. He makes a swift, good decision. I got to act now.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise the Lord. Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Now.
If you don't know.
David makes a swift decision.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
his father is a shepherd too.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
but there is no cellphone those days.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
there is no landline those days.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he cannot ask his dad counseling what to do.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. Hallelujah.
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 So David makes a great decision.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he confronts the lion.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he's got the lamb out of his mouth.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
now listen to this.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the lamb was, little lamb is very cheap.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
and this sheep multiplies so fast.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
so David could have thought, oh, let one lamb go.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
dad will never know I lost the lamb.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
I better, I better save my life.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
then why did David make a decision putting his life in danger to snatch the lamb knowing the lamb may not make it?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
even if he had rescued the lamb, the lamb could have died.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
why did he make the decision to attack the lion?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
why he took that almost dying lamb from his mouth?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
you know why?
Why do you know?
The lion has a habit.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
if he got one lamb, he is going to entire, win, bring his entire family of forty-five or fifty lions to come back again and they will, they will lose fifty lambs.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
so instead, look at this.
If you had allowed the lamb to go.
If you don't know anything about the subject, the lion's family is coming to take more and go away.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
so David made the decision.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
I will not allow the lion to get the victory. If he got the victory the first time, he is coming back with many lions to take everything we have.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
if you allow one rupee loss and the devil says you didn't act upon one rupee loss, he is coming back to take thousand rupees from you.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
how many will make the decision? I will not allow the devil to rob even one rupee from me.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
if he steals one rupee, he is coming back for thousand more.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
how many will say, I am going to make a decision tonight?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
I am not going to lose even one rupee to Satan.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise the Lord.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
hallelujah. Don't allow Satan even to lose one paisa.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
if he tries to steal, chase after him and pluck it out of his hand.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the kingdom of God suffereth violence and guess what?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise God. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
And what the Bible says?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
only the fierce one can bring it out of it.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
and the violent take it by force.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise God. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Instead of being violent against God, how many say, I am going to be violent and declare war on Satan and stop him from robbing me?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
hallelujah.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
David makes the decision.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
I will not allow the enemy to rob me anymore from now.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
David passed the test.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
then God could have sent him to the battlefield.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he could have sent him.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
why did God not send him?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God wants to know David's, does he have a discipline?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
so the bear comes.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
and what did David do?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he made a swift, good decision.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
I will not allow the bear to even invade us.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
hallelujah. Praise the Lord. God found his man.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
his lifestyle.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
his discipline.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
his principles.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
his value.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
even the little lamb is valuable to him.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
all this took forty days to prepare him.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
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 God heard your problem.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
David heard the lamb.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
but God is wanting to know is David going to be a good decision maker?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
now observe this carefully.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
this is very crucial.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise the Lord. Hallelujah.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
God has seen what's happening to Israel.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
they are fearful, they are afraid. They are filled with anxiety and now going through a depression.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
now God launches David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
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 And David comes.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
and what happened?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
he heard what Goliath was saying.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the decision maker, King Saul is hiding with his soldiers.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the soldiers are afraid.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
the people are afraid.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
but God has found a decision maker in the midst of fear, anxiety, mental depression. God has found a David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
how many see God's way of arranging and preparing the solution for victory?
If you don't know anything about the subject,
hallelujah. He is preparing a David.
If you don't know anything about the subject,
you may be filled with fear. You may be filled with anxiety. You may be filled with mental depression. God says, I have a solution who is coming through for you.
If you don't know anything about the subject, You will be like this. 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 But God is faithful to you.
Four hundred years, Israel is going out to God.
Four hundred years, Israel is going out to God.
Why has God not sent a solution?
Why has God not sent a solution?
The political climate was not good and the person was not yet ready to be sent.
The political climate was not good and the person was not yet ready to be sent.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Pharaohs were wicked, pharaohs were harsh.
Pharaohs were harsh.
God was waiting for a good pharaoh.
God was waiting for a good pharaoh. There were good people.
That could be some people's way of thinking.
There were some people's way of thinking.
But what was God doing?
But what was God doing?
God is preparing a man called Moses for forty years to train him how to lead a nation.
To train him how to lead a nation.
That's why God could not send him early.
That's why God could not send him early.
He had to prepare the man.
He had to prepare the man.
God has to prepare the person to set you free from your misery.
God has to prepare the person to set you free from your misery.
Many unmarried girls say this. Lord, don't you know I'm getting older? Don't you know I got to bear babies of the man? I'm getting older, why are you not sending the husband?
When the children are born, they ask me, why are you still married? Why are you still married?
God heard your pain.
He heard your pain.
He felt your pain, he heard your pain through your voice.
He felt your pain, he heard your pain through your voice.
The moment you cried out for a solution.
The moment you cried out for a solution.
The moment you prayed for a husband.
The moment you prayed for a husband.
God is preparing the man to come to deliver you.
God is preparing the man to come to deliver you.
Praise the Lord. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
We have men who are unmarried.
Unmarried women.
And they are saying, Lord, you know I need a wife, why are you not sending me a wife?
Why are you not sending me a wife?
The moment you prayed for a wife, God is arranging and preparing a woman to become your wife.
When you pray, God is preparing a woman to become your wife.
When Daniel began to pray on the first day itself, God heard him.
When Daniel began to pray on the first day itself, God heard him.
God has only heard your voice and felt your pain.
When God heard your voice and felt your pain.
Now, he is preparing the person to come and bring comfort to you or bring deliverance to you.
When God heard your voice and felt your pain.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
This nine-year-old boy.
This nine-year-old boy.
Who is a friend of mine.
He is a friend of mine.
He is a great pastor today. He is a great pastor in the US.
He is a great pastor in the US.
When he was nine years old.
When he was nine years old.
He saw a beautiful girl.
He saw a beautiful girl.
It is in his classroom.
He saw a beautiful girl.
How many know even ten-year-old, nine-year-old know how to fall in love?
How many know even ten-year-old, nine-year-old know how to fall in love?
Hallelujah. How many, they always look at each other?
They always look at each other?
I, I like that little girl.
I like that little girl.
And I like that girl.
I like that girl.
So, this nine-year-old boy.
This nine-year-old boy.
She told him, he told her, I want to marry you.
When she told him, I want to marry you.
She did not answer him a question.
She did not answer him a question.
He wondered why she did not answer the question.
When he wondered why she did not answer the question.
Then, he grew up ten years, eleven years, twelve years, he kept on asking the question, I want to marry you.
When he grew up ten years, eleven years, twelve years, he kept on asking the question, I want to marry you.
But she never said yes.
But she never said yes.
Then, he finished schooling.
Then, he finished schooling.
He asked her again, I want to marry you.
She asked him again, I want to marry you.
She's not answering.
She's not answering.
Then, he got a job.
Then, he got a job.
Then, he bought a house.
Then, he bought a house.
Then, he asked her, will you marry me?
Then, he asked her, will you marry me?
Yes, she said.
Yes, she said.
He said. From nine years onwards, I've been asking you when you're nine years old, why you took so long to say yes?
When he said, I've been asking you when you're nine years old, why you took so long to say yes?
She said, you had nothing, you are depending on your father's house, you lived in your father's house, you had no paycheck to take care of me, so I did not answer you.
She said, I have no job, I have no salary, I have no father. How can I do?
Then, he realized.
Then, he realized.
That girl was very intelligent.
That girl was very intelligent.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Praise God.
Praise God.
If you want something good, you got to show what you got.
If you want something good, you got to show what you got.
I tell all boys.
I tell all boys.
Unmarried men.
I tell all boys.
Don't ask a girl to marry you if you did not make arrangements for the married life.
Don't ask a girl to marry you if you did not make arrangements for the married life.
If you go and ask her to marry you with nothing, she'll say big NO.
If you go and ask her to marry you with nothing, she'll say big NO.
How many of you don't like the word no?
How many of you don't like the word no?
Praise the Lord, hallelujah. How many of us know what God is trying to tell us tonight?
When God is telling us, what God is telling us?
God has heard about your need through your heart and lips.
When God has heard about your need through your heart and lips.
The day you called on God, he started making the arrangements to send a solution for your problem.
When you called on God, he started making the arrangements to send a solution for your problem.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. How many are ready tonight?
How many are ready tonight?
To realize.
How many are ready to realize?
We all have needs.
We all have needs.
Different kinds of needs.
Different kinds of needs.
When you have a need, you go ahead and pray.
When you have a need, you go ahead and pray.
The moment you pray, God begins to work on your need.
When you pray, God begins to work on your need.
I repeat it again, the day you called on God and informed him about your need, God is making arrangements to deliver it to you.
I will tell you. When you tell your needs, God is preparing you.
The story of creation tells us God is a timer, he is a perfect arranger and he will bring everything on time to you.
When God is preparing you. When you tell your needs. When you tell your needs.
It's good to have a dream to become a doctor or an engineer.
It's good to have a dream to become a doctor or an engineer.
It's a good desire to be a lawyer.
It's a good desire to be a lawyer.
It's good to have a desire to become a judge.
It's good to have a desire to become a judge.
And you say, Lord, I want to be a pilot, I want to be a doctor, I want to be an engineer and God heard it.
When you say, I want to be an engineer, I want to be a lawyer.
But he will never deliver you the, the certificate saying you have become an MD or an engineer or a lawyer, he will not bring that certificate to your door.
But he will never deliver you the, the certificate saying you have become an MD or an engineer or a lawyer, he will not bring that certificate to your door.
Praise God. God does not bring the certificate of medical accomplishment or engineer accomplishment or a lawyer's accomplishment, God does not deliver you your certificate of education.
When God is preparing you.
Praise the Lord. To get that certificate of education, we got to do our part.
When we get that certificate of education, we got to do our part.
How many of us have a need?
How many of us have a need?
There are two parts in the need to be met.
There are two parts in the need to be met.
We have to do our part and God does his part.
We have to do our part and God does his part.
Hallelujah. How many are ready for God to bring a solution to what you have a need?
When you have a need?
In one more minute, I'm going to close.
In one more minute, I'm going to close.
First.
First.
We got to believe, trust God to be the best arranger of our solution for our need.
When we get that solution for our need.
Second.
Second.
I am going to do my part.
I will do my part.
To get my need met.
To get my need met.
Blind Batiimus knew he was blind.
When he knew he was blind.
He has the knowledge, wonder the Messiah was told in the book of Isaiah, he shall open blinded eyes.
When he knew he was blind.
For nearly seven hundred years, the preachers were preaching in the Jewish temple, when the Messiah comes, he shall open blinded eyes.
When the Messiah comes, he shall open blinded eyes.
But Blind Batiimus has heard on the Sabbath day, when the Messiah comes, he will open blinded eyes.
But Blind Batiimus has heard on the Sabbath day, when the Messiah comes, he will open blinded eyes.
Now, he has heard Jesus, the Messiah is coming his way.
Now, he has heard Jesus, the Messiah is coming his way.
There are many Jewish blind beggars there.
There are many Jewish blind beggars there.
Only one heard the sermon preached on the Sabbath day, every Sabbath.
Only one heard the sermon preached on the Sabbath day, every Sabbath.
There are so many blind people attended the Sabbath service.
There are so many blind people attended the Sabbath service.
But the rest did not pay attention to the sermon, only one paid attention to the sermon.
But the rest did not pay attention to the sermon, only one paid attention to the sermon.
But the rest did not pay attention to the sermon, only one paid attention to the sermon. And one who paid attention was Blind Batiimus.
And one who paid attention was Blind Batiimus.
Who gets a miracle from God? Who gets a miracle from God?
Who gets a miracle from God?
Those who pay attention to details.
Those who pay attention to details.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
When the pastor preaches, when the minister preaches or prophesies, pay attention what God is saying to you.
When the pastor preaches, when the minister preaches or prophesies, pay attention what God is saying to you.
When the pastor preaches, when the minister preaches or prophesies, pay attention what God is saying to you. Hallelujah. Only Blind Batiimus paid attention to the spirit revelation of the Messiah coming.
Only Blind Batiimus paid attention to the spirit revelation of the Messiah coming.
How many say, Lord, I am paying attention to what you're speaking to me?
How many say, Lord, I am paying attention to what you're speaking to me?
There were so many other blind people who came to the Sabbath and paid no attention to the sermon.
There were so many other blind people who came to the Sabbath and paid no attention to the sermon.
There were so many other blind people who came to the Sabbath and paid no attention to the sermon. Many people want to hear the voice of God.
Many people want to hear the voice of God.
Why don't they hear it?
Why don't they hear it?
You got to pay, pass the test of paying attention to what God is saying through his word first.
When God is saying through his word first.
Hallelujah. How many say, Lord, I am going to pay attention to every sermon, every time the word of God is being preached.
When God is preaching.
And those who pay attention to God's word, to God's spirit, you will hear the voice of God direct.
When God is preaching.
You got to hear the word, you got to hear the spirit and then you will hear the voice of God.
When you hear the voice of God.
Let us stand to our feet.
Let us stand to our feet.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, Jesus.
Glory be to God. How many are ready to hear God's voice bringing a solution to the need and the pressing problems you have?
When you hear the voice of God.
Hallelujah. 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 Everyone that has a need here tonight.
Praise the Lord. When you have a need?
Those who have a need.
When you have a need?
Open your mouth and tell God, this is what I need.
When you open your mouth and tell God, this is what I need.
You want a job, you want a husband, you want a wife, you want a healing, you want a financial miracle, you want a house, you want a car, you want a washing machine, drying machine, whatever, you got to open your mouth and tell God your need.
When you want a house, you want a car, you want a washing machine, whatever, you got to open your mouth and tell God your need.
Come on, name your need tonight.
Come on, name your need tonight.
Hallelujah, quickly, quickly, quickly.
When you have a need?
Open your mouth, don't keep your mouth shut and whisper.
When you have a need?
Blind Batiimus didn't care who heard his need. Blind Batiimus didn't care who is hearing his prayer of need.
When you hear his prayer of need?
He lifted his voice and made his voice known to God.
When you hear his voice and made his voice known to God.
I want you to close your eyes right now.
When you close your eyes?
And focus on your need.
When you focus on your need?
Say, Lord, this is what I need.
When you say, this is what I need?
I need my healing.
When you need my healing?
I need a good heart.
When you need a good heart?
I need a good liver.
When you need a good liver?
I need good lungs.
When you need good lungs?
I need a good plan careers.
When you need a good plan careers?
I need a good job.
When you need a good job?
I need a good husband.
When you need a good husband?
I need a good wife.
When you need a good wife?
Lord, I'm calling out on you.
When you call on me?
Open your mouth and talk to God.
When you open your mouth and talk to God?
Let the devil hear you're informing God about your need.
When you hear you're informing God about your need?
Let Satan hear that you're talking to God about your need. Because Satan, when you pray about your need, Satan knows, he cannot stop God from bringing your need into your miracle, into your hand. Hallelujah! Satan cannot stop God to bring your miracle to your door. You open your mouth, say, "Lord, I need the miracle now." I need my miracle today. Let the devil hear it. He cannot stop God's speed, he cannot stop God's speed in bringing your miracle to your door. Satan cannot stop God's lightning speed to bring your miracle. Glory! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Tonight is your miracle night. Tonight, God is bringing your miracle to your door. Hallelujah! Open your mouth. Come on, Blind Bautimius was a man, all men, open your mouth. Blind Bautimius was a man, and all you men, open your mouth like Blind Bautimius. Hallelujah! Come on, talk to God, talk to God. Your miracle is going to be brought to you. Close your eyes, God is going to show you a vision. Your naked eyes cannot see God's vision. You will see God's vision through your inner eyes. Say, "Lord, I thank you," now you say, "Lord, I thank you, "You're bringing my need at lightning speed, and thank you, Satan cannot stop him." Your God is releasing his miracle now into your life. Clap hands all you people and punish the devil. Hallelujah! Let the celebration begin. Clap hands, all you people! Clap hands, all you people! You're celebrating God's miracle coming to your door. Hallelujah! Question God! Just start thanking God for the miracle.
Praise the Lord, nandri, 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 nandri.
God wants you to celebrate the arrival of his miracle in your life. He wants you to celebrate your miracle that is coming to your door. But you're going to celebrate the worker of your miracle. Bible says, clap hands all you people and shout unto the Lord, "For God is bringing your miracle speedily to you." I am not going to touch you. I am not going to touch you. Your miracle worker, his name is Jesus, he is coming by with your miracle to give it into your hands. Hallelujah! Come on, when Paul and Silas were celebrating and giving thanks to God, guess what, their miracle of breaking chains took place that very moment. We are going to close in 30 more seconds. Pastor Pradharsinghe is coming. Do you know why God said to clap your hands? So that the devil knows he is defeated, he could not stop you from getting your miracle, and you are now celebrating! Glory, hallelujah! You're being healed now! You're being healed now! Your stomach tumor has gone! Your stomach pain with the tumor has gone! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Come on, let the celebration begin. Don't stop it. Say, "Lord, thank you for my miracle." Thank you for sending my miracle. Yes, now God is performing your miracle.
Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah! Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Amen, 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 amen! Glory to God, glory to God, glory to God, glory to God, glory to God! Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Amen, 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 amen! Glory to God, glory to God! Oh, hallelujah! In the name of Jesus! Glory to God! Thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord! Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord! Amen, 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 amen! Glory to God, glory to God, glory to God! Thank you, Jesus! Thank you, Jesus! Hallelujah! Glory to God! Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah! Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Glory to God! Hallelujah! In the name of Jesus! Amen? Hallelujah! 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 Receive your miracles! Glory to God! Amen? In the name of Jesus! Hallelujah! Glory to God, glory to God! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Amen? Amen? Hallelujah! Amen? Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Praise the Lord! Amen? Hallelujah! Thank you so much, our dear pastor, for, oh, hallelujah, I cannot say. Amen? This is only a beginning, amen? There's so much is coming. Amen? Praise the Lord! All are so, so, ma, anbu pidave. Alasatama. Anbu pidave. Asio da vande. Dagatho da vande. Virputo da vande. Dagathai parthi. Virputi parthi. Vaji parthi. Enno de pesu de. Enno de valkile. Orarputi seidi. Aden bettukundan. Samdoshmaipogre. Idu uru. Thotuvyadi apola. Illaarkum paravattum. Yen samdoshan illaarkum paravattum. Adhiknaa karanamai irpen. Esvin namathil pidave. Amen? Enathumavekathris thothri. Ullamay parshutthanaamathis thothri. Enathumavekathris thothri. Kathrisidasaagalabukarangale marvade. Amen? Mridakatra Jesus Christum kirubai. Samadhanam asseervada. Namanevaru bhasanathikundadde devadasan. Vandasaagalaru ulkudumagalu parathirukra. Ulkudumathariyavaru gudha. Indadeva samadham ippudhu mudalonda irupadaake. Amen? Orumurudan alla karangalata te kathramayipodhi. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah! Hallelujah, hallelujah! Devanadhan naduvalirukrar. Adasya. Hallelujah! Ningal kurivai vandhirge. Narivai kadanduselenge. Dalavinarai kadandvandhirge. Dalavangalai kadanduchelenge. Illada pargalai vandhirge. Illam irukravargalai kadanduchelenge. Katharamulay asseervadi parar. Amen? Alap kadanselenge, kathramulay. Illarunukarangale kuluki. Ipalarunukalangale kulukara, stotrampanala. Kathramulay asseervadi parar. Amen? Praise God!